At five thirty-three, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, for this special planning board, specially scheduled planning board meeting and joint public hearing between the planning board and the Economic Development Committee. I think we do just a sort of a quick general announcement as we have a we're on a short timeframe. The this this platform needs to be taken over by, I think we need to get off here by quarter of seven. So we have about an hour and ten minutes to go to go through this. Is that right, Eric? It's seven o'clock that the ZBAs picking up here?
Correct. And the reason is we had to squeeze it in before the ZB's meeting that was already previously scheduled.
So just so just to give everybody a sort of a heads up on the timeframe. Um, so the first order of business for the planning board is the approval of the meeting minutes from March fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Did anybody have any comments on those?
No.
George, you're muted, George. Still muted.
Okay, I can hear you, George.
George?
Well, hey, listen, I'll happily just make a motion to accept. And if George doesn't like that, he could like a gesture or something.
All right, I think George is going to try and come back in. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor of approving? Oh, there's George. You're still muted, George. I think I've only seconded.
I did second.
George, still working on it.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
There's kind of an echo though.
So, um, so, um, so, um.
Might be.
Yeah, extreme feedback, George. We can't hear you. Oh, my God, what is going on? Oh. That's good with the goldies, folks. We'll give them a second.
George, you okay?
Yes. That that's just crazy. So I was, when I tried to get to a document, uh, because I didn't have a chance to print it out. So I was trying to get to it and it logged me out. Um, there was a, um, I'm going to try to do it from memory, um, in the discussion of the MDR.
Yes.
It was noted, uh, in the middle of that, I believe, um, that I said, um, uh, that I was concerned about because of political, uh, something, uh, political. Can you read that word after political?
Maneuvering.
Thank you. I wanted to change since this was representing my perspective. I know I didn't use that word, but it was probably a reasonable way to put it. But I wanted to use considerations rather than maneuvering. That's how I judge my. So I just wanted to put substitute considerations for maneuvering. And then the next sentence I see, I believe, was about, um, returning to the previous standards. And that's okay. I wanted to add comma. And if there would be any changes, that it be part of a thoroughly researched and deliberative process.
That sounds good.
You get that? Okay, Eric?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. That was it. Sorry about that.
Well, we didn't really, we didn't actually officially vote. We tried to vote. So this goes under the, uh, under the, the, under the sort of the heading of further discussion after the motions.
Sure, of course.
Uh, so. Anything else from from Mark, anything on your end? You good, Emily?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so unanimous. So we'll do a roll call for that. Um, okay, so I am now going to open the public hearing, um, for the planning board and the, uh, for the playboards portion of this hearing with the Economic Development Council at five thirty-eight. I should state that if, uh, if, if this meeting is being recorded, if any other persons present are doing the same, please notify me at this time. Anybody out there? Okay, thanks. Um, so I'll be, I'll read the public hearing notice. Uh, but do I do I do a roll call, Eric? I mean, um, upon opening up the hearing? And then read the notice.
You can do that. Yes, you don't have to, but you can.
All right, I'm just gonna do a quick roll call. George Chalumpsis?
Here.
Mark Maloney?
Aye.
Emily Ash?
Here.
Um, is there anybody else on the planning board I'm missing? Amy McMahon? Okay. Not here. Okay, so I'll read the, uh, the, uh, the public hearing notice. In accordance with the Homewood Charter, the Economic Development Committee and Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing on Thursday, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, at five thirty at the City Hall Meeting Room. Well, obviously, we're not meeting there. Uh, um, at this, at this long Webex number access code one thirty-two sixty-one, one sixty-two to consider the following proposed amendment to the Greenfield zoning map. Extend the existing general commercial GC zoning district along Berniston Road in the northeast section of Greenfield from rural residential RC to GC to the Berniston Town Line by extending five hundred feet from the road center line of the west side of Berniston Road, five hundred feet from the road center line of the east side of Berniston Road to I ninety-one and changing the entirety of parcels R ten dash five, R ten dash eight, R ten dash eight A, R ten dash nine, and our ten dash A, R ten dash thirteen of I ninety-one and east of Berniston Road from RC to GC. So if the, uh, if the EDC would like to open their public hearing?
Okay. And I'm going to open the public hearing for the Economic Development Committee. And, um, could we take the role, Counselor Elmer, please?
Sure. Uh, Counselor Stempel Ray, I don't see her, so I'll keep going. Counselor Wheeler?
You're muted, Counselor Wheeler.
Still muted, but raise your hand to see. He's here. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Elmer, that's me. I'm here. Chairperson Disorder?
Here.
Uh, we have a quorum.
Okay.
With, uh, Counselor Stempel Ray absent.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. So I, um, I don't know if there's any members in the public here who wish to speak. Um, but I thought that, uh, in lieu of that, maybe I would just give a quick overview of what of what we're proposing here. I guess, Eric, I also just to put to put a little context on this, Eric, you were saying that, uh, Counselor Dolan withdrew his, his, the initiative to, to, for the change of the zone to RC.
That's my understanding.
Not to do the zone change, but to allow RC to have the unlimited cultivation tier allowance. So, so we're discussing, we're discussing this in that context. So I'm going to do a quick screen share here. I'm going to try to. Okay, are folks seeing the, uh, the zone map change?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So this is something that Eric put together that, uh, I guess I want to start actually just by putting this in, in, in a larger context here. So this is, this is the overall, uh, you know, zoning map of Greenfield. This is, this is the existing GC area right now that, that extends along Route Five, just along sort of the southeast edge of I ninety-one. And this is the area that we're, we're proposing annexing on to that, to that, uh, to that zone. So it really is, you know, a continuation of that zone forward along north to the, to the Berniston line. I just thought it'd be helpful just people to, to see that in context of sort of the, the overall general map as we, as we think about this in the, uh, the more sort of blown up, blown up version of that. So, um, I ninety-one, of course, goes, is going along to the north right here. The, uh, the GC zone ends at this point currently. And what, what we're proposing is to extend it along north, five hundred feet to the west of, of ninety-one, and then along to the, uh, uh, the northeastern boundary just before it hits ninety-one, and then following back down along ninety-one and along and underneath it and, and rejoining the, the general, uh, commercial zone down in here. Um, so currently, indoor action occupies this property here. And there is, uh, uh, this, 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 these two parcels. I know that my, my mouse isn't working for folks, isn't it? It's somewhere off to the side. I'm trying to point with my mouse, but I've understood that doesn't quite work.
I'm seeing.
You can see your mouse over the map. It works.
Is it, it's in the right location?
It's a little hand.
It's a little hand. It's in the right location.
All right. So it's going where it should be going? Okay, good. Because it doesn't always do that. Um, so, uh, and these, so these, and these two, these two parcels here are slated. There's a lot of wetlands in here, and there's also slated for new large-scale photovoltaic array. I'm not sure when it's going to start construction, but it has gone through permitting. Yeah, went through the permitting last year, I believe. So, um, so we just, we, we see this as a continuation of, of, of the, the GC development pattern up along, um, underneath the highway and to the north. And, 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 and sort of bringing, bringing the, the indoor action lot, which is sort of a, in, in, in certain ways, it's a, it's a non-conformity within, within the RC zone. So it's, it's bringing, it's bringing it into the GC zone and then, and then absorbing the rest of this area, which, which is, uh, is going to be pretty tough to, is slated for the PV at this time anyway. And just to sort of put, put this little, this little slice of land here in some sort of, of perspective, right now, it's, um, let me see if I can bring up a a Google Earth image here.
Isn't it farmland?
Yeah. So is this, is this a Google, is this a GIS map up in here?
Yes, it is.
So this, this is all, this is farmland. So here's, here's the Google Earth sort of image of that. And so the strip of land comes along here, and then the Berniston Town Line kind of runs right along through here. So this is farmland, but this is all, this is all wetlands in here, as you can see on this Google Earth image here. And on the Oliver mapping, you can see this, that this is all, this is all, uh, wetland here. So I think if this, this would be, this, I think this would be difficult land to develop, um, for a commercial use anyway. Eric, do you have any thoughts on that?
It would definitely have to go through the Conservation Commission, uh, not to say development couldn't happen, but it would go before that commission and the possible wetland mitigation would have to occur to allow his project to move forward.
Right. Um, so that's, that's a little background from, 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 from our end. George?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one other regarding that strip, um, to the west of five-ten. That one other part of our discussion was, I think you, Eric, pointed out about the lack of, um, services um, up there, lack of, uh, utility services. Am I remembering that correctly? You are remembering it correctly in that town sewer does not extend to this area. And, uh, town water, that's a good question. I believe there is, some of these are on wells. And then, that's a good question. I'm not sure if town water is here. Town sewer is not. Thank you.
Okay, um, is there, are there any members from the public who would like to, uh, I'm going to open the floor up to the, to the, to the general public? Is anybody out there who'd like to speak?
Chuck? It's Phil. I'm not, I'm not public here, but I have a question, if I could ask, about the property that's going, that they want to do commercial marijuana. I forget the name of the company.
Yep.
Uh, so I rode my bike up there, uh, yesterday. Uh, and, you know, it's, it's, there's a couple of buildings, and then there's a, that big dome. And then there's a big parking lot and a basket, couple of basketball courts. Um, do, did, do we have like a, a plan of what they plan to put there? They submitted anything?
Nope. No plans have been submitted. Uh, it's just the idea of a marijuana cultivation facility there. There's no conceptual plans or preliminary plans at this point.
Would, would they have to submit plans, uh, before they can go ahead?
Oh, definitely. They'll have to go through the special permitting process from the Zoning Board of Appeals and have a complete application with a complete site plan in order to be approved.
Got it. Thank you.
Right. And so the, the, the planning board's rationale and sort of in putting this map change forward was to, um, I think it was to provide the flexibility for, for, you know, a limited tier eleven uh, uh, business to move into a general commercial zone without necessarily opening up the entire RC zone to, um, to large-scale, uh, you know, cultivation structures. The, 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 the R, the initiative that's on the floor right now, not on the floor, but, but sort of in the works right now, that the city council is going to be, you know, discussing, I believe, is, is, I can't remember if it's this week or probably next week, is, is to open up RC for unlimited tier, but, but with, uh, um, for tier eleven, but with a definition about the kind of structures, whether they need to be hoop structures, they need to be barns, where they need to be, um, a building that could be converted to residential use. So there's, there's a little bit of a definition about the kind of buildings that can go into RC that will accommodate the cultivation. And so, um, by changing this to GC, it allows a little bit more flexibility in, in, in the kind of development and the kind of structure that they could be built on, on this particular piece of property.
Uh, one more question?
Sure.
The, I know there's a separate, uh, there's in motion a separate thing to increase the size of land to, from five thousand to a hundred thousand square feet. Looking at this property, this is not a hundred thousand square feet, is it? George?
Charles, okay?
George? Yes, George?
Thanks. Um, so they didn't present plans as, um, as has been said, but they did give a general description. And they were not talking about, um, they were looking for a hundred thousand square feet, but not horizontal. They were talking about a vertical structure that would, I believe that's correct. And so because they had proposed that, which would not match the, the pending proposal about farm-like or dwelling-like structures, um, it occurred to us, and that, and because this is a pre-developed site along a pretty developed, uh, strip, and because, um, they had already indicated the type of facility they want to do, which wouldn't match the other current proposal, this, um, zoning change for this area seemed to match both needs to protect the open space from, um, uh, development that would be clashed with it and also to, um, facilitate a more commercial or industrial-looking structure in this pre-developed space.
Thanks. Uh, back just one more comment?
Sure.
Look, looking at their business plan, uh, they were actually talking about having local farmers do the growing. Um, but I know they also talked in, in one of the presentations about this being uh, a full-service thing where they grew and they harvested and they packaged and they sold. But it, uh, uh, I was just a little confused because it seems like they're proposing two different things, both growing on this spot, which seems small, and also providing a market for local farmers who, who might want to grow marijuana. Um, uh, you know, this, this is not relevant to this zoning change. I'm just trying to understand, uh, what their business is, and I will stop talking.
Well, uh, thanks, Counselor Elmer. I mean, I think, you know, the, they're interesting questions. And, and I think that there are, there are questions that, that will come before us in the special permit venue when and if they decide to, you know, permit a project here. And then we'll, we'll learn more about, about what they're proposing. I think this, this, uh, this map change would allow them to come forward probably with a number of, of different business plans, but that they would all still require special permitting as well as, as well as, uh, yes, Eric?
I just wanted to clarify for Counselor Elmer that the proposal is a marijuana cultivation facility. And they asked for, in the original proposals, to have accessory uses of retail and product manufacturing. But those would be accessory, minor in detail compared to the entire cultivation facility. And the purpose of a cultivation facility is to grow marijuana. So local farmers would not be growing it and bringing it, they're growing their own. That's the whole purpose of a cultivation site.
Hmm. It, that's, that big tent is certainly a big structure, and you could do a lot of growing under it. Anyway, enough said.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they would be reusing that structure or, or building a new structure in its place.
Building a new structure in its place. They will not be using the dome structure. Right.
George?
And just to, to clarify all the information we had heard, my understanding, they were talking about multiple levels within that structure, not just one level. So.
Correct. Right. Right. So if you build, if you build a thirty thousand square foot building, it's got three tiers of, 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 uh, canopy, then that's your, your hundred thousand square foot canopy level. Rough numbers.
And just a, a point of clarification, that, that actually is a good-sized parcel. Isn't it nine acres?
Nine acres is very large. You could easily do a hundred thousand square feet without, spread out, without doing it vertically. Horizontally, you could have enough room for a hundred thousand square feet.
Okay.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes, uh, I guess my, uh, uh, question is, why extend the, uh, uh, the zoning over into the wetland, uh, left of, uh, the five-ten, uh, um, Berniston Road? Is my question. It doesn't seem like anything can really commercially be, uh, be done with that area. Uh, so why, why extend it across the road?
Eric, did you want to address that question?
In order to be absolutely sure that this could never be considered a spot zoning, uh, we want to continue the existing zoning further south, which is five hundred feet from the road center line off of Berniston Road. So we kept that five hundred foot distance from the road center line all the way to the town line. So that even if it, I mean, anything can be developed with cost. Likely, will it be developed? Probably not. But it, with proper engineering and mitigation in, in costs, you could, you could do something there. But in order to not be considered whatsoever spot zoning, that is the proper way to do it.
Thank you.
Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. Um, I have a number of questions. Um, more than Counselor Elmer even. Um, first of all, let's see, I'll bring them up. Um, I presume a butters were notified of, um, the public hearing tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct. All the butters involved with the zoning change was mailed directly about the, the meeting.
Great. Um, I think it's unfortunate we don't have any here, but that's kind of the reality of meeting during a pandemic, I suppose. Um, so I'm just going to say philosophically, I'm totally against this, but practically, I'm willing to get on board. It feels kind of like the French King Highway Library deal to me, um, where we have an end result. How do we get there? Um, so I guess my first question, well, let me see. I'll go, I'll go to my list. Okay, one of my questions was, um, could you clarify whether there's a limit to the number of cannabis cultivation facilities in Greenfield? Or is the limit to the number of dispensaries? I couldn't remember.
Eric, Eric?
So, uh, per Greenfield zoning ordinance, section two hundred dash seven point one seven, the limit of eight is only for marijuana retail establishments. There is no limit on any other type of marijuana use within the city of Greenfield.
Okay. Um, good. All right. So, um, the, the accessory use piece, um, that was a, am I correct in understanding that? Well, first of all, that's not part of the, what we're talking about right now. That's part of the other proposal, the change from tier one to tier eleven. Is that, are we assuming that's necessary for the indoor action folks to move forward? Or that that is, the accessory use piece just makes their business model work better?
I think. Eric?
If I recall their statements during the public meetings, their primary goal, objective is a marijuana cultivation facility, and that's what they want to do. They are also trying to do accessory retail and product manufacturing, but I don't believe that makes or breaks their project. Their main deal is a cultivation facility at tier eleven.
Okay.
May I add to that?
Who's, who's speaking, please?
Emily Ash. Clerk of the Edinburgh.
Yep.
Um, I, I just wanted to add to Eric's, um, that as the whole point of all of this is bringing in this business to Greenfield and therefore benefiting the community. And so I think that part of the proposed goal of the next motion is to accommodate whatever type of businesses coming in. They're trying to figure out what they can bring in. Does that help clarify to you, sir?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. Um, and then another question is, you know, do we, do we see these two separate zoning changes as, as being really tied together? Does it make sense for, would it make sense for council to pass one without the other? Or is it really necessary, um, to pass both?
Eric?
If we want to accommodate the entities that want to enter Greenfield to do marijuana cultivation facilities, and there are three of them. cultivation facilities, and there are three of them, then both of these amendments would have to go through since yours is withdrawn. Both of these would have to go through in order for us to allow all these businesses to come in and do what they want to do with local permitting.
Thanks. George?
George?
Thanks, Charles. Back to the previous question, if I could. I, I just want to check, I don't have my zoning ordinance in front of me, sorry. Are those accessory uses allowed within the GC zone?
Eric?
So, so in the general commercial zone currently, product, marijuana product manufacturing, marijuana retail and marijuana cultivation are all allowed as separate uses or combined within the GC district. The RC district, Rural Residential District, does not allow product manufacturing or retail currently.
So if the zoning map change happened, this, the folks at that location would be allowed to do those accessory uses?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I have a couple more, yeah, follow up questions to that. So the, the accessory use piece was proposed as part of Counselor Dolan's proposal, and it was included within the planning board's recommendation on the Greasy Knoll RC tier one to tier 11 piece, is that correct?
Correct.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, is, do the other folks, am I right in referring to them as Greasy Knoll?
You could say Green, Greenfield Greenery LLC.
Right, thank you, Director Turok. The Greenfield Greenery, do they, have they expressed an interest in accessory use?
They have not expressed interest in accessory use.
Okay. Because I was, I was wondering about the, is everything in compliance with the public hearing? If council were to take Planning Board's recommendation and amend the Greenfield Greenery proposal to include the accessory use as, as Planning Board recommended? I'm just wondering if that's a substantive change or not?
Since, since your proposal was on the table at the same time this other one was at the table, or Counselor Dolan's, which had those two things in there, I, I would say, no, this would not be substantive change. This could be part of this, and it could be part of the City Council's motion, because it's all been transparent and open and proposed previously during the same process.
Good. All right, that's, that's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chairperson Disor.
Yes, yes.
I, I just wanted to point out that Counselor Stempel is here.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Elmer, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to be, we're going to actually be deliberating over this in our own meeting when this closes. So do we have any more questions? Does anybody have any more questions for the, for Planning Board members or for Director Turok? Okay.
George?
Thanks, I just have a, since we're both deliberating both bodies, do we have, this is a technical question, are we going into breakout rooms or something, or how is this working? Thank you.
They're doing a separate meeting with a separate WebEx link, so they're going to leave and you guys will deliberate separately.
Thank you very much.
I will, when, if no one else has any questions, I will, and we're done, we will close when there's nothing else that anybody else has, but I'm not sure that that's the case yet. Yes.
Council Wheeler?
Thanks, I'll just enter this as really a comment from myself as a citizen in Greenfield. Overall, I would not support extending general commercial up there. I find it to be kind of an odd carve out. So philosophically, I, I, I'm not really behind this. Like I said, I don't particularly think it's supported by the master plan, but I understand the case that's being made, and I see how it will, it should fit with the general character of the way things are. So I, I guess that's, that's all I just wanted to say, say that. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. I think, I, I would just, just to respond, you know, I think that, I, I understand what, what, you know, your, your concerns about this and sort of taking it in terms of, in the context of the, of the master plan. But I also think that, you know, that it's, it's, it's a balancing act to allow development to happen in a way that, in a way that, that, that also sort of protects and acknowledges, you know, our open agricultural space. And, and by, by, by opening the door to large industrial scale sized farming buildings in, in the, in the RC zone, you know, it's just, there's, it's, you don't, you don't know what's going to happen. So by a compromise like this kind of allows some controls to be maintained, and, and, and there's, there's an argument to be made that it's, that it's actually is a logical extension of GC, of the GC North. And so it is a compromise, but I think it's one that, that in the end is, is going to benefit the town.
Any further, any further questions or comments from any members of the council?
I'll, I'll just say that I, I think Chuck put well the way I see it. And I, I understand Counselor Wheeler's, you've got a theory of zoning, and this offends it, and I hear you. But I do think this is a good compromise, and I think the city will benefit.
Okay.
Should we? Council Hirschfeld?
Yes, I just wondered how going commercial affects the property values of the residents who, who have homes surrounding this, or would be turned into commercial, commercially zoned. Any, any guess?
Eric, do you want to talk about the map in that context a little bit?
Well, what I can say is that I'm not an assessor, number one. But if I had to guess on that, then I would say that because the, the existing uses along that on the east side are already commercial, that this zone change is not going to affect the properties around these already existing uses, because assessors go to what's already there existing and not on zoning what potentially could go there. Sometimes they do is vacant land and it's zoned something, but in this case, all this land is already being used commercially, so I don't think it would have a negative impact on property values, but that's just a guess as a non-assessor.
Thank you.
Could I add something?
Yes, please.
From my bike ride and seeing the abandoned mobile homes stacked up, I, I can imagine this would be raising the property values of the surrounding properties. But I am not an assessor either.
Yeah. I mean, we were sensitive to that, and that's why, you know, we, we were able, you know, to sort of work, this is the, this is the, there's a little mini sort of subdivision in this corner here, and, and the, the change of, the, the change north to the GC is, is really not going to impact them, because 91 bifurcates that, the zone, and, and, and they're sort of off, annexed off in this own little world of their own. So I think that, I think they're, I think they're protected, certainly.
I'd like to comment on that, if I may.
Yes.
They're, they're really in that area, there, there aren't homes. As you go down further, see where the general commercial is, where it starts dark pink. On the opposite side of the road even, there are homes that are in the general commercial, but going right up, the parcels that we're talking about, it's, there's going to be a large scale solar, there was the abandoned truck, which is an auto repair, indoor action, the, and I'm not sure that in any of those, because I think I looked at all of the parcels. Maybe there was one, one residence, but all, there aren't any homes, there weren't any homes that were in that besides perhaps one just between.
In, in here, you're saying?
Yeah. Yes, and as you go down further south, there are homes, but they are, but they're already located in the general commercial district on either side of Berniston Road.
Oh, down here?
Yeah. So I didn't, I, I looked at each parcel.
I lost it. I lost my Google Earth.
I mean, opposite, opposite from the lumber store and the cube storage and the bath fitter and the golf cart and the air gas, on the opposite, those are all general commercial. And, and on this, on the opposite side of the street, those homes are all in the general commercial. And then as we get further up into where you, where you were delineating the zone change, there wasn't, there weren't homes. So it ends with Maple Valley. Maple Valley is the last, I believe, in the, in the general commercial, and then you go up further. So.
Okay. This is Maple Valley down here? I'm not sharing my screen anymore, am I?
No.
George? George, you have your hand up?
We've lost George.
Okay, any further, any further comments or questions for?
May, I, I have a question, and this might be ignorant, because I'm joining a little bit late, I apologize. Is this, is this the trouble we run into? And I don't know if there's a solution to this. Is this the trouble we run into trying to delineate parcels as, as a specific zone? I know there's a lot of talks about mixed use, and maybe I missed a conversation about mixed use, because it seems like we're, we're brushing up on the fact that this is residential, there's going to be residential homes in this area, and so we're, we're inviting general commercial as well. Is there a way to delineate that this is mixed use? Because I'd love to see opportunity for, for more housing or other type of development. I know we're thinking about specific development for this, but it seems like we always, we always kind of, I see, I see Eric raising his hand, so it's just kind of like a very broad question.
Yes, it's a good question, and the, the GC district is already a mixed use district because two family and three families are allowed by right through the recent zoning amendments that were done. Single families are still not allowed by right and require special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So Counselor Disor is correct, when they did the zoning in 1989, they created some nonconformities with the single family homes there. But the GC district, I consider it a mixed use district because of the recent zoning changes to allow those housing uses, uses to be in with that district.
Thank you, helpful.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Then.
Charles, I have my hand raised.
Oh, yes, George, I can't see you, your videos, your video feed is gone.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, since the master plan was raised by Counselor Wheeler, I just wanted to say that my sense is that this zoning change and combined, combined with the other part of the recommended, part of the zoning ordinance, does both work toward the goals of the master plan to protect open space and also try to facilitate reasonable economic development. So I just want to say, I think it does seem congruous with the goals of the master plan. Just wanted to offer that. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. So Eric, do we have to take a vote to end the, the public hearing from the planning board, or can we, can we just end it?
You take a vote to end the public hearing, and so does the EDC.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to end the public hearing on behalf of the planning board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of ending the public hearing of the planning board?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, so no roll call.
I'm going to close the public hearing on behalf of the council.
I'll second that.
Okay. Should we take a roll call for that, Counselor Elmer?
I, I think just a hand vote would probably do.
All right, very good.
Aye.
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 So we're closing this at 6:20 PM, and.
We're going to regroup.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, we're going to regroup at the, at the other WebEx address. Everybody know what that is?
It's on your agenda, that will be on your agenda, so we'll see you in a couple of minutes.
Well, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Take care, folks.
All right, so what do we have here? George, you're still here? Mark, Emily, you're here? I wonder, I wonder if Emily signed off thinking that that was the end of our meeting?
She, she may have thought we were adjourning.
I think so.
Do you know her number?
I, I have a sheet upstairs, I can go get her number real quick.
Yeah, thanks, we should give her a quick buzz.
Yeah, let me, let me do that. We'll sign off for a second.
Why don't we take a five minute adjournment?
Yes, we still have time before 6:45.
Yep. Five minutes.
You going to give us a topic? Sorry.
Emily is trying to get on, but having difficulty.
Were you able to get a hold of Eric?
Yes, she called me back. She's trying to get on, but may have, for some reason, the link in the access code is not working when she tries to get back in.
Oh, that's too bad.
Maybe a flaw with this program. If you exit out and then try to come back. Actually, I've seen people do that though. They left and come back in. So I don't know what her specific issue is, but she is trying.
Let's give her. I mean, technically, we, we could probably stay on here until 10:00 of.
Yes.
I mean, we can't get booted off. We can only make it so the other folks can't join, right?
Yes, but we're going to be out of here because I'm going to end the meeting at 6:50, no matter what.
Oh, yeah. Well, you're, you're driving, you're driving the ZBA meeting too, right?
Uh, no, I'm not going to attend this one because they got an easy agenda. But
Okay.
I, I would not want to have them start late. This would not.
No, wouldn't go, wouldn't go over well.
No, let's stay scheduled first.
But you guys, even if Emily's not able to get in, if, if you allow me to cast a vote, would we three be sufficient for quorum and voting purposes?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So Mark, I'm sorry. I, I'll elevate you at this time.
Cool, cool.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I thought you previously elevated my, all the votes I had is four zero. So now I need to switch them to three zero, except for this one?
No, I, 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 I didn't, I didn't.
I didn't hear you say it. I just assumed it.
I think sometimes I forget. I just start voting, but I don't think that you did earlier in the meeting, Charles. I just jumped in with all my votes.
Right. No, and I, I, I just, this is like one of the, this is like one of my shortcomings is I, I don't always remember to, to elevate folks from alternate to poll members. So I guess officially you probably should make those three, three zero votes till now. I think we only took, well, I guess, I guess on all the motions, yeah, all the motions to open and close and.
You can't do a sweeping retroactive appointment of me as a voting member?
Don't have the answer to that one.
Truly, I really wish Emily could be here. I'm, I'm sorry she's not going to be here to help us, to help us discuss this.
Can't she just call in or something?
She's trying to get in either way with the call in. She just obviously couldn't do it. She tried.
Okay. Should we proceed, Charles?
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess so. So we got, we got about 15 minutes here. I, I, I do wish that some people from the public were there to, to sort of express one way or the other, how they, how they feel about this. But I don't know if that's a reflection on just the difficulty of the times or because they just, they're, they, maybe they don't have any concerns. I guess we can't really read too much into it either way. We just don't have that to go on.
If I had to guess based on 20 years of experience, I would say that they have no concerns because otherwise they'd be here if they had concerns.
Yeah. Yep. And, you know, I, I understand Counselor Wheeler's, you know, sort of, I think philosophical attitude about, about extending the, the zone north and, and zoning what could be considered, you know, agricultural land into general commercial. But I, 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 I do feel like that we've, we've made a good balance here because on the other, on the other end of the equation, do we, you know, and I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if we're going to be inundated with tier 11 cultivators or not, but, you know, do we, do we, do we want to leave that possibility on the table in the RC zone? And I, I just think this is a good, a good compromise.
Charles?
Yes.
Put my hand up.
George.
Yeah, I think, I think we've discussed this very thoroughly multiple times. And, and I was glad we had included the EDC and some other counselors, I believe, who were there in this. And I, I'm just ready to, having to make a motion to send a positive recommendation on our proposal. And, yeah, I don't know that we need any other further deliberation. But that's not up to me.
Well, um, I'll second that. And then I will open the floor for further discussion. In case Mark has anything he would like to add, or Eric, if you have any more words of wisdom to add in.
Oh, I would just say that we'll let Mark go first because he's a board member and then I'll make my final comment.
Okay. Mark?
I, I, I have nothing to add. And I, it's not like this is our first time discussing this. So I, I mean, I, I'm really comfortable with this. I, I appreciate Counselor Wheeler's concerns, but also it doesn't seem to me like this is that, that radical of a move. I mean, it's GC below. It's, it's kind of equivalent when you kind of cross the line into Berniston. It seems to me like this does create like a good upper for some development. And I just, I, I have no concerns. I'm, I'm fully supportive of moving this. Right?
Thank you for that.
And my final comment is that in 25 years' experience in the field of planning through many different areas of the country and different regional agencies and seeing many zoning changes, this is a logical extension of a commercial district. Could no way ever be considered spot zoning. It is a logical move and I think the master plan supports it. I agree with George. So I think you guys did a great job.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. And Charles, I'll just add if I could. One, I appreciate what Mark was saying that it's, if you look beyond, you know, the, the town lines, it does kind of extend. You know, there's a bit of a commercial, there's a small commercial, commercially zoned section north of our boundary. And also I would, I would not think, I, I think, you know, the, the, these virtual meetings in some ways make these meetings more acceptable. So I don't, I don't believe that there's any barrier to people if they had wanted to address a zoning change in their home area, that there was any barriers to them. Just being, and I totally agree with Eric, people didn't have a concern that motivated them to do so. So.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I did find this, this definition of, of, of understanding spot zoning by this lamp, by this, by this land attorney, Daniel Shapiro Esquire. And I, I'm just going to read it. So what constitutes spot zoning? The process of singling out a small parcel of land for a use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area and for benefit of the owner of such a property into the detriment of other owners. And I think that if you, if you just, if you just break that down, I don't, I think that we're, you know, we're, we're on pretty solid ground here. So we've made a motion. It's been seconded. We've discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Saying a positive recommendation in the city council. Aye. So it was unanimous. So no roll call. Is that, is it valid to say that, Eric, if it's a unanimous consensus that we don't have to do a roll call? I've just been doing that, but yeah.
Yes. No, that's, that's common practice.
Okay. Great. So thank you very much for that. And we can move on quickly to other business of which there's very little. Board and staff reports. Nothing from my end.
Nope.
Any, any news from your end, Eric?
Just that the next planning board meeting is scheduled for March 18th at 6:00 PM. And on the agenda is further discussion of the MDR regulations and ordinance. And I believe that's it so far on the agenda. Oh, yes. Presentation by the Greenfield Tree Committee on their recent tree inventory.
That should be, that should be fun. I'm looking forward to that. All right. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Take care, everybody.
Thanks, guys.